Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order a regular city council meeting for Monday, January 27th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members who have given their lives for our country. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, if you'd take roll call, please.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dold.
Present.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Dold.
Present.
Councilmember Karafotis.
Here.
You have a quorum of seven.
Thank you. Item four is approval of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Monday, January 27th, 2025 council meeting as presented, agenda as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Karafotis, discussion from table, from the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, we have some recognitions tonight. I'll start with Chief, Police Chief Bob Arnoski, for swearing in a promotion.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having us tonight. I am privileged tonight to stand up here with Officer Dylan Perrin. He is being promoted to Sergeant tonight. I wish I had more time, like an hour or two, to tell you just what a wonderful outstanding police officer he is, but I got about two minutes, so I'm going to read this prepared statement. So, as you are aware, we recently had a vacancy for the rank of Sergeant, and Dylan has been selected to fill this important role. Dylan joined our department over five years ago, coming to us from Riverview PD. Since then, he has served as a dedicated road patrol officer and was selected for additional responsibilities, taking on assignments with Metro Narcotics Enforcement Team, Southeast Michigan Auto Crimes Consortium, Violent Gang Task Force, and his current role as a member of the Western Way Special Operations Team. In addition to that, in addition to his operational duties, Dylan has contributed significantly to the department's growth and training initiatives. As one of our defensive tactics instructors, he has been instrumental in updating training programs over the past few years. His focus on modern health and wellness practices, as well as practical, real-world tactics, ensures that our officers are better prepared to serve and protect. Throughout his time here, he has earned numerous accolades and awards, including being named the 2024 Police Officer of the Year. This is a testament to his exemplary service and dedication. With this extensive experience, unwavering commitment, and deep passion for the city of Garden City, we are excited to see Dylan bringing his leadership skills to the Road Patrol Division. We are delighted to have Dylan's family and friends here to celebrate this special moment. Joining us tonight is his wife Jennifer, who will have the honor of pinning his badge. Clerk Smith, if you're ready.
I, Dylan Perrin, have been appointed to the rank of Sergeant in the city of Garden City. Do hereby solemnly swear that I will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the laws of the state of Michigan, the laws and ordinances of the city of Garden City, and will uphold and abide by the rules and regulations, as well as all other orders, be they general, special, or otherwise, of the Garden City Police Department, to the best of my ability, that I will not at any time lend, advise, or support to any organization known or suspected of having subversive tendencies, nor will I in any way affiliate myself with such organizations. So help me God.
Congratulations. At this time, we'll take a real short recess and allow the police to go back to work. Okay, we're back in session. At this time, we have recognition for our career and technical education. So if I can, I'll call up Ms. Linda Bamarito, Marissa Kane, David Lindsey Holt, and Nathaniel Hoges. Come on up. And these three high school students and their teacher.
Come to, who hasn't spoken?
Come on up. Come on up. And, and they, they want to explain something about the CTE program, and the students have something also to say, so before I read mine, I'll let them speak. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for having us here. We really greatly appreciate it. I, I have to tell you, that was the most awesome display I've ever seen. That, that was amazing. The Career and Technical Education Program at Garden City High School has three currently. We have three programs. I am the, I am the CTE coordinator, and I teach the business, I teach the business classes. And then we have Mr. Andrew Romas that teaches construction trades, and Mr. Michael Skorsky who teaches the graphics. And next year, we're starting a new program called Education and Training, which will, our kids will be mentored by students in other, in our other schools, in our other schools, to, that are, the ones that are interested in going into teaching. So they'll be working with our teachers in our schools, and then we're kind of growing our own, so that when they go to college and they come back, they can come teach for Garden City schools. Within these programs, we have a student organization, and our student organization that I, that I lead is DECA. And these are three of our DECA students. DECA is an organization that does a lot of developing of leadership. We do a lot of community activities and community service, which they're going to tell you some more things about. And we also compete. We compete with, now, last year, we only competed with Wayne County. Now we're competing with Wayne County, Monroe County, Oakland County, and Washtenaw County. We just went to, to competition a little while back, and Dave's going to tell you more about that. So I'm going to let my students speak for a little bit, and thank you very much again for having us. This is Marissa.
We just went to our district competition where we won 23 medals, and of 18 members eligible to compete at the state level. Coeur's Corner, our school store, has won the highest national honor of gold certificate for the last 13 years, and we raise money every year to send a child MDA camp. Towards the MDA camp, we do it through a series of fundraisers that consist between September to February, where we try to aim for one each month. Our highest earning fundraisers are a miracle minute that we do in October, where we get people from a variety of the clubs within Garden City High School to help out, a few of these clubs being ROTC and Key Club. And our second highest earning event is our annual Stepathon that is coming up this week. For this event, we work with multiple clubs within Garden City High School as well, and have their members participate. Each person who participates donates $50, and we also get local businesses involved each year. Each business sponsor donates at least $100 in total through the event, and throughout it, we make over $2,000. Thank you.
Hello. We visit the senior towers, and we did crafts, we played games with them, with the residents, to show them that even though not blood, we still care. We go to the elementary schools to help kids learn about money, saving, treating others kindly, and how to avoid being bullies and being bullied. At our school, we help to set up career and college fairs in the commons during lunch, and create lunchtime activities to keep our classmates involved through the day. DECA is just one of two clubs in our school to complete, to compete in the world outside of Garden City. The other programs we have are MIT, MIT, oh, I'm sorry, MITs for construction trades and skills, USA and MITs for printing slash graphics communication. In these career programs, we learn about real work skills and work ethic. We also learn how to, we also learn cooperation and teamwork.
Less than a year ago, I was sitting in a middle school classroom, wanting to stand out and being unsure about my future. Then DECA came to visit the middle school. Joining DECA has been a transformative experience. It has become my key to college and opened doors I never thought possible, like being here. Through DECA, I've discovered pathways that align with my passions, and discovered integral skills such as public speaking, teamwork, and leadership. It's not, it's not all about competitions, however. It's about becoming a leader, someone who can take initiative, navigate challenges, and inspire others.
Thank you very much. So, I didn't mention this before, but these are all underclassmen. We have a freshman, a sophomore, and a junior here. So this is literally the future of Garden City.
Okay, and I'm going to read, read the recognition. Whereas, the month of February 2025 has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education, and whereas Career and Technical Education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness. And students in Career and Technical Education programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase their engagement and achievement. And Career and Technical Education provides students with career exploration opportunities earlier in their educational experience, which enables them to make informed and beneficial decisions about their academic coursework and pursue established programs of study and career pathways. Leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges related to addressing the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields, including healthcare, energy, advanced manufacturing, cybersecurity, and information technology. And Career and Technical Education prepares students for these and other fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials. And Career and Technical Education programs ensure that employers have access to a qualified and thriving workforce, ensuring America is a strong and competitive economy. And citizens are encouraged to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the Career and Technical Education programs in their community, and support and participate in these programs to enhance their individual skills and productivity. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Garden City does hereby, on the 27th day of the month of January in the year 2025, proclaim the month of February 2025 as Career and Technical Education Month in the city of Garden City. Congratulations.
Mayor, could the teacher say the kids' names again? We didn't hear introductions for the two boys.
I'm sorry, what?
The names again.
Oh, okay. I'm Linda Bamarito. This is Marissa Kane. This is David Lindsey Holt, and this is Nathaniel Hoges.
Thank you.
Come on over here. We got our photographer there. Okay, and now we have a presentation of proceeds from the Chili Cookoff community volunteers from October. Mr. Matt Miller, our Community Development Director.
And I'm here with John Rush. Thank you. So I, tonight, I just wanted to recognize the volunteers and volunteer organizations that helped with the Chili Cookoff. This year, we did a registration of community organizations that, to register to volunteer at the Chili Cookoff, and also, you could register for an organization and work hours, and in turn, those hours were given a set rate per hour, and then that money was then earned for that organization. So it was done in exchange for service given to us during the Chili Cookoff. So I'm going to read into the record each of the groups and how much they earned for the event. The first is Autos for Autism. They raised $903.75 for their organization. They'd like to come up and get the certificate. So we're going to call them all up, and then the mayor will take a picture with everybody. So, also, well, Autos for Autism is coming up. I want to mention the, here you go. Their next event, the big event, is June 16th, 2025, for the Autos for Autism. There'll be a Garden City Middle School, so put that on your calendars in case you don't have that. But if you'd like to just go and stand up front, and the, and then the rest will join you. The Haven of Love Dog Rescue, $243.75 was raised for them. Right? Mary, thank you. Right? There you go. Thank you. Garden City Goodfellows, $135, and we've got that for you, Mr. Dold. He's right here. He's coming. There you go. Thank you. Inspire Inkster was $236.25. They could not be here, and that's kind of the PTA for Hicks Elementary, and they do events for the schoolchildren there. The Community Coalition, $330, and I know Mr. King will be coming for that. Thank you. And then Project Grad 2025, $75 was raised for that, and that's an organization that helps over at Garden City Schools. They are not able to attend. Our Home Pantry, we raised $225, and I know Julie will be coming up to get that. Thank you. Thank you. And the Rotary Club of Garden City, and that was $90, and James is here for that. And then finally, the Needy Family Fund, we raised $135 for that. I know Brian Smith will come and collect that. Again, thank you all for assisting, and also all of your community work and outreach in the city to make it a better place for us. Next year, the Chili Cookoff is on September 27th. We're looking for volunteers always, so please put that on your calendars, and we need volunteers to assist us in that day. So, thank you very much. And I know that the mayor will come and we'll get a, I think the photographer will make sure we've got everybody here.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you, Lori.
Okay, that's all our recognitions for tonight. I don't see any state or county officials here. We have no presentations. Community events. Sergeant Lewis, Citizen Police Academy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sergeant Lewis. I'm the Community Resource Officer over at the Police Department. I'm here tonight to inform everyone that Citizen Academy is coming up. It's coming up this year in April, so it's a little different for doing the springtime this year. It will run through April 1st through the first week of June. Applications are available at the Police Department, our Facebook page, and also on the website. So the academy is open to Garden City residents. Deadline to turn in the applications is the 28th of February, so we still have a little bit of time to get those in, if you haven't already. The Citizen Academy is a great way to build a relationship with the community, gives working knowledge of the Police Department. Each week, classes will cover different areas of the Police Department. It exposes all attendees to different aspects of policing, training, policies, and different laws, with great focus on making decisions that we as the Police Department make in real time. Lot of different trainings going on this year with it, some new, new stuff being added as well, so it's going to be an awesome, awesome event for us. Look forward to everyone applying through the application process, though again, it is available three different ways, at the Police Department, on our Facebook page, and also on our city website. So with that, nothing further, and look forward to everyone applying.
Sarge?
Yeah.
Is it once a week?
It's once a week. It'll be on Tuesdays.
And how, how long is it?
It's going to be all the way until June 1st.
I mean, it's like a four-hour class?
It's two, we try to keep it between two hours, but sometimes runs a little longer, but it's two hours what we shoot for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Look forward. Okay. No petitions or communications, no public hearings. Oh, we do have a communication. Mr. Miller, our Community Development Director, talking about some DDA activities.
Yes. So, good evening again. I, I do, I have three things that really didn't make the agenda. Couple kind of came up over the weekend, so, and then the other I wanted to just add because I was here, so. But the first, I, I wanted to talk about the housing readiness, the master plan, open house that we had last Thursday. We had a good turnout for it, and I wanted to just talk a little more how we're going to have more opportunity for input from the community. We hosted the event last Thursday, and part of the open house was that we had talking points and boards, and actually, they're on display in the council chambers here, and they talked about, tell us about your neighborhood, housing for all life stages, let's imagine new housing, and housing material preferences. So these were kind of talking points to focus people to talk about the future housing needs of the city, and also the master plan amendment that is being proposed. So again, there was a lot of discussion, ideas shared, and we received input from the people present, but we also wanted to be able to reach out to people that weren't there. So we are in the process of actually developing a survey that will go out, it'll be on the city's website. We're fine tuning it. It's going to be available January 30th through February 13th, and you're going to go to the homepage on the city's website, and you'll be able to click the link, and you'll be able to give your input there. All the boards that we talked about during the open house, we'll have kind of mini boards on the website, and you'll be able to turn those in, and we'll be able to collect the data that way. So if you could do that, I would really appreciate it, and all the input is very well-wanted, and any ideas you have for future housing in the city, we'll appreciate. All right?
Mayor? Matt? The survey, is it, you mean, people print it off and bring it in, or is it a fill-in on the website and submit it right there off the website?
It's a fill-in on the website, but I can have some paper ones prepared here too, if you want to stop by, so. All right?
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. So I have one other item, or two other items. So the other is about our hometown heroes, and that banner program, we're going to do that again, the DDA did sponsor that for 2025. We're going to have 40 banners again this year. They're going to be displayed from Memorial Day through Veterans Day. Also, you can go to the city's website on the DDA page, there's a nomination form, and I do need it filled out completely, and also a digital image of the hero in uniform as part of the application. And I do want to stress, the clearer the image, the better we can get it up on the banner, so a good digital image. You can print these off, fill it out, bring it into City Hall, or you can email me, and that's all on the website, how you can get that to me, and also, you can email me the image, and then we save the image for each veteran or hometown hero as it goes along. So we need that done by May 1st, so that we can get them all printed and up for Memorial Day.
Mr. Miller, those are, you're starting to take those now?
Yes, we're taking them now.
I'm sure it's going to be very quick again.
Yes, yes. So we've got that, we've got that one, and then one more. So the other one is actually the First Business and Business of the Year. So that's up on our screen, screen also. And again, it's, go to the website, we get a lot of, we get a lot of traffic at the website, and so this is a good place to promote all of these, all of these events and things to do. First, we're, we're working, you know, really to connect with our business community, with our residents, and we want to promote the First Business and the Business of the Year. our residents, and we want to promote the First Business and the Business of the Year program. We're working with the Garden City Business Alliance on this project, and they've offered to sponsor the winner. Our website, again, gets a lot of traffic, so you can go to the website, go to the link, and nominate a business for the special recog- recognition, recognition, sorry. We are, again, we're asking the community to think about a local business that has a positive impact on the community, delivers amazing customer service, and also contributes to Garden City's successes. We have lots of businesses that give a lot back to the community, and so think about that when you're going to the website nominating a business for that. We're going to accept nominations till February 28th. So again, go to the website, and you can nominate that First Business Business of the Year. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, sounds good.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, item 11 is our consent agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, 1 through 6, including 6A. Aye, as presented.
Support. Support from Mayor Proton Dolch. Further comments from the table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, our action items. Item 1 is our Civic Plus software update, upgrade, and Communication Director Zach King will speak on that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In front of you is an opportunity or a contract amendment to our current contract with Civic Plus that has our CMS for the website, to include a few other new software options, C Click Fix, mobile app, and Chatbot. I'll go in a minute which each one of those are and how those work, but I'll start off with just kind of going how we even got here. I'll talk a little bit about each application with some slides. I have two videos to show, and then I can answer some questions. This really started a few months ago, right after Tim started. He met with the departments, and he asked me, how can we do better on two-way communication? A term we kind of developed in that conversation of how can we continue to communicate with the residents as much as they're communicating with us? As often, we see our residents are sending us messages, requests, services request, you know, how-tos, forms, but they're not always getting that response back. It's getting fixed, the problems are getting resolved, but they just don't get that immediate satisfaction that a lot of other companies provide. Amazon, you fill out a request, you get it back instantly, all these other services where you're instantly hearing back. I just think we're lacking on, or we've noticed that we've lacked on a little bit. And these few different softwares from Civic Plus kind of fixed that problem. During the last five months, I started a conversation with Civic Plus, since they already do our website, but I also started a conversation with a few other vendors like GoGov, and one other just slipped my mind, and two other softwares actually that all kind of do this type of, these three options, but just didn't fit the niche that I think that we have here, what we're trying to do. I think they're all good applications, they just don't work with the other software we already have here. We already have BSNA doing some of our code compliance, we already have BSNA doing our business licenses, and C Click Fix and Civic Plus's applications really fit into what we already have here. So as much as this isn't sole source, this is a sole source purchase, especially since we already have the contract with Civic Plus, but I did go around and get some of those other quotes. And with the discounts that you see here today, they're actually more comparable than the other products starting from fresh. This contract also, and this is really why we brought this to today, this is something that we kind of found out recently from Civic Plus. Originally, this started again five months ago, so I could budget for next budget year, so we could bring those numbers in the next couple of meetings and budget. But something we kind of figured out is we are currently paying a 5% uplift for our website. So right now, we pay for our website yearly, that's a big cost to run that website and all the graphics behind it. They charge us a 5% uplift every year automatically, like our other technology contracts. That's pretty high for the industry for that, but that was something signed back in 2016-15 when we originally signed with Civic Plus. I kind of found out that not every city pays that, so I was a little upset and trying to get that down, and I've been asking for the last four months to bring that down. Finally, they kind of said, wait a minute, if you were interested in doing some of our quarter four promotions, we'll also let you open up this. And kind of funny enough, I was really pushing for 2.5%, but their system doesn't allow for half percent, so we got that half percent at two. So that's something that is not necessarily, or it is reflected in that contract amendment, but that is one of the biggest savings I talked about in my letter, that $16,270 over seven years. If this does get approved tonight, and these three applications plus the website, that savings, that 3% will be $16,000 over the next seven years. So that was actually pretty exciting to be able to get them to agree to that. Like I said, we started this a while ago to budget for next budget year with some quarter four promotions that they're running, and that's actually why it looks a little confusing. I do agree. On my agenda cover is the correct amounts for the fiscal years. Their budget amendment is for the full price of the products after the first two initial years, so that the first fiscal year will be at that $6,000, that's just implementation cost. Fiscal year two, which will start in July, run for 12 months, that's at $15,117. That is not shown on the quote, but that is after applying some credits for the company. I tried to get them to put that on there, but they were a little confused when I was asking. That will get applied after their credits are applied with a signed contract. And then fiscal year three, another whole year and five months away from now, that's where that $21,093 comes from on the amendment. So that is the contract price. Year four will be 2% above that and so on and so forth. Okay. And again, I just wanted, oh, I also did communicate with Wayne County, Westland, and Livonia the past week. Wayne County uses C Click Fix, which I'll talk about more in a little bit, and Westland and Livonia about implementing these products. They gave tons of great tips and recommendations, and they were kind of excited to see us. We're actually the last one in the little neighborhood here to go with some of these applications. So it's kind of cool that this big section of Wayne County will all be using C Click Fix, but also that mobile app and the Chatbot. Again, all these products are to increase that two-way communication for our city administration, public works, police, ordinance, and fire. So I have some slides, I'll go over these really quickly. The C Click Fix, this application, this is a 311 reporting tool for citizens to report citizens' concerns. This is currently being facilitated with the city through the GC Fix-It form, which is really just almost a Google Sheet, if you will, a Google form. You kind of fill out your information, the staff get an email, and then we're constantly behind the scenes tracking that request through email, through the departments, transferring it to other departments, using some email groups to get the requests. And often, it's kind of hard even for like someone to say from one department to transfer to another and trying to track what's even happening. It's kind of difficult. So sometimes I often, a lot of times, get a question like, hey, I put this in, where did it go? And I, you know, I can kind of see where it started off at, but who knows where it traveled from there, so it's kind of a little bit of going in a department to find out what's going on. So this will streamline the communications between the departments and the citizens' request, all through the app, through automated responses and responses driven by the teams themselves. This allows you to pinpoint on the map the issue, and what's kind of cool about that is if you pinpoint an issue on like a county road and say there's a pothole, this will actually go to the county for them to reply. We'll still see that you put in that request because you did it through our portal, but the Wayne County's going to have their automated reply come in, and then their crew's going to get dispatched for the fix. And I thought like, you know, that's nice, but also maybe sometimes Wayne County takes some time to reply to stuff. And because of the way C Click Fix looks, you can actually go online right now and see all the requests in all the communities. And I was kind of looking through like the ones that Wayne County has, and it does seem they're very responsive on the requests. So I was like, okay, that's actually, that's a really cool positive that because of the mapping and where you pinpoint stuff, things can get to the county, but they can easily send it back to us, and we can easily send them stuff if something's misreported. That also works with our trash company, Priority Waste, and we're, I'm still trying to figure out the DTE, the streetlights. I'm told it would work, but Westland and Livonia are having some trouble, so I'll figure that out here shortly. This also works really well with the mobile app that we're also looking to purchase tonight. The mobile app allows you to quickly pull up that map, report a concern, and move forward with your request, and communicate back and forth. C Click Fix takes about eight to 12 weeks to implement, but the internal training will be the longest, training the staff at PD, training the staff at DPW to use the new software. Cities around us that are using this is Livonia, Dearborn Heights, and Westland, and then in Wayne County, of course, there is Wayne County, Redford Township, of course, and Yipsey. Next is the Chatbot. The Chatbot lives on the website and every single page in the bottom right corner. Chatbot is AI-powered Chatbot that, like I said, will sit on every page. It allows for quick navigation through the website, so if you know you're trying to get somewhere but not exactly sure where to go, you can easily type in trash, uh, trash concerns. It'll take you to that page, where normally you'd have to go to Departments, DPW, and Trash, which you might not even know that Trash falls under DPW, but it does. So it allows for quicker and faster navigation. It also allows for questions to be answered directly from our FAQs that are already on the website. So if you ask a question like, when is my trash day? It'll pull up the FAQ that we've already typed down, answer of where the streets are, where the map is, of what day your trash is from. This has a little bit quicker implementation, so we might roll, this one takes only a month to implement, but we were also looking at slow-playing this one a little bit and targeting it for May, which is, we're also doing a website refresh at the same time, so we might release it with the website refresh. We're still deciding on that, depending on tonight. The longest time for this to implement is training the AI, so even kind of some of the staff giving it some responses, connecting it to the right FAQs, to the right pages. A lot of it picks up on its own, but we're able to fix that in the backend, which is a large benefit in the search that's on the website. The search on the website uses Google that crawls all of our pages and provides you just a search as if you were on Google. If you search for GardenCityAmI.org and then anything after it, it'd be the same thing their search is currently doing. We're not able to fix that, like anything, something that's actually what we're working on right now, people often go to the website and search rental policies almost all the time, if they're trying to do, uh, fill out for a rental. Chatbot, we can actually direct you to the correct page, where the search for some reason wants to take you to a different page on our website. So we're not even fix that because that's Google, but the Chatbot, we can tell it where to go. The sites, the cities around us using Chatbot is Livonia, Inkster, and Canton. And lastly is the mobile app. The mobile app takes one to two months to launch. The longest part is working on with the Apple App Store. They're a little bit slow, but the app will be fully customized to our city and how we want it to look. I kind of have a picture of what Livonia's looks like right now, which I really love, and I think we'd copy a lot of the buttons they use. What's great about this is all of those buttons you see all come from the website. So when we're uploading and editing stuff on the website, it automatically goes to the app. There's no second step for staff. This is already all implemented, which a lot of these features haven't been used in the recent years, this website, but we've been pushing hard to get all the departments to put stuff on their calendar, the document center, the image center on the website. It's kind of a learning curve, but we're getting there, and every department now almost has someone like assigned to communications, and it's working really well to get, to keep the website up to date. I know even like Parks and Rec, it's, to them, it is actually doubling, because they have stuff in sportsman, stuff on our website, they have several different places to upload. But the fact that we're getting there is going to be great. And then this mobile app integration, you can download it from the App Store or the Android Play Store, and have a quick link to all those different services. Oh, something cool about the calendar too, I know Councilwoman Care Fotis asked about this, we've been working on a community calendar, and I've been searching and searching and searching for the software to do this. A lot of stuff comes back really costly. In the talks of this, I kind of just kind of threw out a question like, do you guys have this service? And she actually said, ah, kinda, let me turn something on for you. And they actually turned on a feature for our website that is exactly what I'm looking for.
Nice.
Without no additional cost, and she says she's going to leave it on forever. So we're going to start implementing that, so it's kind of exciting, even within all this, that has nothing to do with tonight's agreement, but we found our place through our community calendar. It's going to live inside an app as well, so very easy to check. Next, I have two quick videos. One is from Civic Plus, talking about C Click Fix and the processes that city are currently doing before and after implementing C Click Fix. So I'll watch that real quick.
We care deeply about our neighborhoods, and when something is broken on our street, we want it fixed quickly. Knowing who to call and having the time to call them can be really frustrating. On the other side, managing these concerns along with daily workloads takes time and a lot of internal communication, so much so that the concerned citizen often gets lost in the shuffle. This results in a bad service experience and a discouraged citizen. It doesn't have to be this way. With C Click Fix, citizens can easily submit concerns from their smartphones, the town website, in person, or over the phone. These concerns are then sent automatically to the right official with the right information to get the job done. Town officials are then able to manage the assignment, communication, and resolution around these issues, keeping the citizen in the loop the whole time. Finally, this data helps the government to run an efficient organization, tracking work, activity, and successful exchanges, so that when management meets with council, they are able to have a better informed discussion, leading to better decisions. C Click Fix, better communication, stronger communities.
I've never seen a more accurate video for what's going on, except we are using email and not sticky notes to go back and forth between departments. The next video is actually a video Livonia released for their residents last year. It talks about first the mobile app, and then the C Click integration into the mobile app. So it's a quick little video, I figured I'd just borrow from them, so take a look.
The city of Livonia has an app. It's free and easy to use. Our official city app has many handy features, including a community calendar of city events, a way to receive city alerts, a tab for streaming Livonia television, and access to cclickfix.com to report a concern. To report a concern, just open the app and tap on the Report a Concern tab, and select New Request. Type in a location, or move the location pin along the map to the area of your concern. When done, tap Confirm Location. From the drop-down menu, select a concern that needs attention, such as debris in the road, a pothole, or trash pickup. Add a photo of your concern to better help identify your request. Tap Next Step. Give a detailed description of your concern and confirm the details. Lastly, decide how you would like to identify yourself, and tap Submit. If you wish to receive a follow-up, be sure to create a profile inside the app and check the Settings tab to receive notifications. The city of Livonia app is a great resource for reporting concerns and staying up to date with all things Livonia. Download the app from the Apple App Store or Google Play Store today.
And I know that's, that has actually been a recent conversation, is the reporting anonymously or reporting with someone's name. C Click Fix does help that integration. As you saw in the end of the video, you can report as yourself or without any response. So that, that integration does work a lot better with, than our current solution, C Click Fix answers that. And then the very last thing is the mobile app. As you saw, there were ways to, you can create an account so you can get notified, so we are actually able to send out push notifications through the app for the people that want to get notified a lot that we do. And also, we are already using Notify Me, we rolled that out, I think, a year and a half ago. That's how you can get notifications of agendas and other things that we upload to the website. We're working on getting a few more things, like the calendar notifications and those turned on. Those you can also get directly through the app instead of text message or email. So I know that was a lot, but if you have any questions.
Yeah, I will, I'll make a comment. Someone showed me the C Click Fix, the app there, and with the Chatbot, you could ask anything, gives you an answer right away. It was, even somebody who's challenged it as I am, I thought it was really good, so I think it's a good, good deal.
Mayor?
Councilmember Dolch.
What's the cost difference between what we're paying now for Civic Plus and to add this on?
So currently, what we are paying for right now is just the website CMS, which at this time sits around $11,200.
Okay.
These are add-ons, and those are the costs, so it'd be, for like this fiscal year, it'd be 6,000 more than the current website CMS. And then next fiscal year from '25 to '26, it'd be 15,117. And then the next fiscal year, '26, '27, will be where we actually get to the contract terms with no credits, which is at $21,093, above the website CMS.
On the mobile app, they were just saying that there's a place on there to do alerts to the residents? Would that take the place of Nixle?
No, it would not. Nixle would still be that mass emergency notifications. That's more for, anything in these three products would be more your general notifications, like events, calendars, agendas, anything we can do through Notify Me.
Not, not emergency, okay.
Yeah, that's the biggest difference between, like Civic Plus, they do have a mass notification module. That's actually something else we did, we started a while ago and bit out. There was another vendor that came in below Civic Plus in the emergency notifications, so we're looking still more into that, because we currently have Nixle. But no, they don't, none of these products handle that. Emergency notifications are the I-Pause requirements behind that.[1754.33]
Okay. I did take a few minutes, and I went on Livonia's website for the chatbot, and yeah, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, I leaned on Livonia a lot because obviously they just did this a little over a year ago, and it was funny because there's a few things I even ran into that I was like, "You guys haven't trained it to do this yet, come on." But no, it was very, very cool to play around, even with all the cities that have it. I was even surprised to see Inkster had it, and actually, they, I think they come and have some of the same issues as us, is that navigation, it's hard to get around the website. And it was actually, I was using their chatbot to get around the website.
Mayor?
Any other questions?
Mayor?
Councilmember Carefotos.
So, it's not going to take the place of Nixle, but could we use it the same way, even if we're still using Nixle? Like, could the alert be something like, there's a snow emergency in effect, that kind of stuff, so that everybody that has the app could use that?
Correct, yeah. That actually already happens today. So, if you were to go on the website and go to the Notify Me underneath Community, you can sign up. It is separate than Nixle, but you can go underneath the Notify Me and sign up for just general alerts, and those are anything from snow emergencies, closures, used to be phone lines down, building closures, water issues, those, when we put those on the website, we also send out the same notification via email and text through that. There's not as many people signed up for the alerts on Notify Me. They are signed up for agendas. They're actually, I'm surprised, working on that a little year ago. I didn't think there'd be so many people, but there are. But because a lot of those alerts are duplicated in Nixle, I think people just use Nixle for that. But yes, that feature is already available and will be with the app.
And just so we're clear, so the residents know, there's no charge for the app?
There is no charge, yep.
Okay.
Free on the Apple Store and iOS and Android.
I can't wait for the calendar.
Any other questions?
Mayor?
Councilmember Whit?
So, with the anonymous or non-anonymous, was there a specification where you can be anonymous and still get an update on because, within the app? Like, making a profile that's still anonymous, but being able to receive a message back, or no?
You'd have to clarify, because you'd really have to give up some piece of information for us to message you back. But we could look into that, because there is an online portal that shows all the reports, and that you're also choosing whether or not it shows up in the online portal or not. I don't know if any of you looked at Livonia's or Westland's or even the counties. You can go on there and see the entire county and where all the requests are, little dots you can click on them and read, you know, who's put it in, whether or not they wanted to put their name on it, so I'll have to look up and let you know.
Awesome, thank you.
Questions, any other questions? Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor?
Mayor Pro Tem Dole.
Motion to approve Civic Plus software upgrade to improve the two-way communications.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Carefotos. Any comments from table, from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Item two is our Park and Recreation nonprofit policies. City Manager, Mr. Gibbons.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. As evidenced by all the certificates we gave out tonight, Garden City is strong on nonprofits. We are supported. Sometimes, I think back to some tougher times financially for the city when the GCYA took over youth baseball, and of just all the nonprofits that exist in Garden City that do so much for the community, it's important for us to support them. Quite often, you know, sometimes it's just letting them have a room, for example, at the Radcliffe Center, or when it was the Maplewood Center, or even at the Police Department. And, you know, council puts out fees for the rental of some of those rooms. So, what I'm asking for tonight is to be able to further support, to empower me to be able to further support our nonprofits in town by those that benefit Garden City that I can, you know, draw a line to, there's a benefit for this nonprofit's activity for Garden City, that I can amend or waive those fees. And what I'd like to do is develop a policy that fits that goal. But in order to do that, I need council's authority to be able to go ahead and amend or waive those and put a policy together. And of course, as it goes, if council has feedback for me, I'd be more than receptive to adjust the policy, but just from a starting point, it'd be good just to be able to empower to do that and continue to, because we have supported our nonprofits, and in some ways, I do think we have had them utilize things within their community. But I just want to be very consistent with the requests council makes for me to charge fees and whatnot to, and this would empower me to be able to do that, so.
Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Whit?
Whit.
I couldn't tell who did it. Councilmember Whit?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager the discretion to amend or waive Parks and Recreation fees for nonprofit organizations that benefit the city of Garden City and establish appropriate and responsible policies and practices to support this.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Comments from table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Carefotos.
I think this is an important thing that we need to do. There's been times, our Garden City garden club stopped meeting in the Maplewood Center because we had to pay for it, so we went to a different place that gave it to us for free. And clubs like, you know, Kiwanis and Goodfellows and all of those things, it's important that they stay in our city and meet here where residents can join them, so I think it's pretty important that we get this done and give him the authority to do that. My one comment would be that if we're using staff time, like if it's something that runs past the time that Radcliffe was open, that they would pay for that, you know, and it wouldn't be completely free. We still need to pay for the staff that are there, but I think it's something that we're doing that's good.
Okay, further comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Item three is City Council Rules of Procedure. Mr. Smith, City Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, in front of you is a proposed change to our council rules and procedures. Councilmember King had reached out. Being new on council, just, you know, asked for clarification on special meetings, workshops, what's the difference? So, I thought back to the memo I had put out last spring, but with new council members, they didn't get that memo. So, really, the changes in here are twofold. One thing that I wanted to put in there was just a definition of what a council workshop is. Previous administrations kind of got in the habit of using special meeting, council workshop interchangeably, where it's like, no, they're two different things. So, this kind of clarifies the difference between a regular meeting, special meeting, workshop. The thing I want to focus on with the council workshops is workshops are mostly discussion-driven, idea-focused, where we can just exchange ideas, kind of formulate plans that, based on that discussion, the department heads can go take back and formulate possible future action items for council meetings. So, that being said, being discussion-driven, you wouldn't make any formal motions at a workshop, just because a lot of the discussion we might have, this is the first time we've talked about it, so 15 minutes later, we don't necessarily want to make a decision that could impact us for a long time by that. So, that way, you know, we can at least design agenda items out of the workshop discussions. So, that's kind of the clarification of council workshops. The other thing I wanted to do is put in an amendment to the place of meetings, because right now, the way it's written is all our meetings, workshops, you know, regular meetings, special meetings, workshops are right here, which I don't want us to go back to the way we had it before, where we had, you know, several meetings a year over at the Police Department, but this way, it puts the wiggle room in there that if for some reason, it would be beneficial to council and mayor to have a workshop off-site, we can do that. Or even just building challenges, you know, we've lost heat in this building and it's an ice box. Right now, in our rules of procedures, it says, "Nope, it's here." So, this way, it allows us to, you know, if there's unforeseen circumstances, we can move it with notification, or if need be, it would be beneficial to mayor and council to have a workshop elsewhere. Like, say, we're going to remodel the Police Department. If we think it would be good to have a workshop over there, so we can actually tour the building, see, hey, like, okay, this area needs work. This allows us to do that. So, those were the two suggestions I put in there. Open to any questions or suggestions you may have?
Does anyone?
Mayor?
Does anyone have a question?
I do.
Councilmember Carefotos.
I know that when we changed this last year, that was upon my request, because I wanted the budget meetings to be on camera. Is it somewhere in here, or the, when we made it last year, that it says that all our workshops need to be somewhere on camera? Even if they're not played live, they're played later?
Yeah, so the language in here still says that all meetings are recorded.
Okay, thank you.
So, even if we do it off-site, you know, we can set up, you know, get some technology over there to record it, so we have that, but that doesn't go away, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dole.
I'm just going to make the motion if you're ready.
Okay, motion is in order. Councilmember Dole.
I motion to approve the proposed amendment to City Council Rules of Procedure, adding Section 2.025, council workshops, and amending Section 2.030, place of meetings, and direct the city clerk to update the rules of procedure and provide a copy of revised rules prior to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Okay, further comments from table, from the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We have no other business. Item 13 is public comment for non-agenda items only. I do have one already from Mr. Hunt.
Mayor and Council, I was up before this council was seated with problems with their building over at Shakka and Pardo. Made some complaints about it. They had, their silt fence was down all the way around the place, all kinds of debris, and no porta-johns over there. Went by today, after passing by in Vannoy, where you got a simple house out there, someone's working on, plumbing's not in, there's a porta-john sitting out in front of the place. The last time I complained, very next day, I don't know who was on them, but they were out there putting the silt fence up right away. Took about a week or so, they got debris out of there. When I went by today, you get to drive around, the mason bags flying around in the street again. All of their trusses are still laying there, which are nothing but scrap. They've been out there since that build was done, and they look like road snakes. They'd never use them again anywhere. Opposite end of the property is their debris pile laying there. I remember years ago, if you're a landlord in this town and you were going to evict somebody, you had to put a dumpster on site before you evicted them. And this guy gets away without a dumpster, just debris pile laying out there that they keep wadding up, bags and throwing in, and we get 40 mile an hour winds today, and everything's blowing down the road instead of being contained. You got out of them once, and they came out, took care of silt fence. Silt fence now both on both streets is all flat again. And why our building department is not on them about a porta-john out there is beyond me. It's right in the lovely blue book. If I had a, if I had a single job out there, single home I was doing, they'd be on me to do it. I can't figure out why this guy's getting away with it, when he needs to clean it up. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, I know our community development director and our building department working together, along with ordinance, has been out there and has looked into it, and I'm sure they will be looking at it, they'll be looking at it again tomorrow, but thank you. Any other comments from the public? Sergeant Lewis, I wouldn't really call you public, but...
Just again, real quick, just to let everyone know, Neighborhood Watch is up and running again. Our next one is February 11th at 7:00 PM. That'll be hitting our Facebook here in the next few days, and this month, or next month, we will have a guest speaker from Hope Not Handcuffs coming in to do a little presentation as well, so just, everyone come on out.
Awesome, thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay, city managers report, Mr. Gibbons.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just, first of all, of course, we'll be getting onto the Shakka address for compliance. We did it before, we'll do it again, and we'll try and make sure that we continue to maintain surveillance of them. And at the last meeting, there was a citizen who discussed speeding on the side streets. You know, I know the police officers present at the meeting had communications with immediately and began to address those issues, but just from a perspective side, you know, he made one comment about, you know, we need police officers on the side streets, but also, we need police officers on the major streets too. And, you know, with a finite number of officers throughout town, you know, we do have to make those choices. And I, you know, some of it, you know, you try and balance, but as a police chief, I always liked having my guys at Ford and Middlebelt too, so that when people pass through Garden City, they realize we're a well-policed, police department. But at the same time, those residents need to see police officers on their street and police that speeding, so they'll continue to make a careful balance between that. But also, on our side streets, you know, we can continue to do things like striping the roads, putting out signs that display your speed, and take other measures that sort of reduce speeding just from an environmental standpoint, an environmental design standpoint. So, we'll continue to do that. I do appreciate their comments. It always is nice, you know, there's a lot of different things for a community, particular police department, to focus on. It's good for our community residents to communicate with us and let us know where they want us, and we'll continue to address that. I was even advised that a check card has been made for some of the side streets that have particular issues, and I know the officers are actively investigating speeding on the side streets. The other is congratulations to Sergeant Perrin. He is an asset to our police department and our community, a very hard worker, and I was really excited to see him become a sergeant. It is nice, he's been sent out to a few task force where he's had some really great experience and brings a ton of knowledge back with him, and it's nice when we can do that, have these well-rounded officers with a various amount of experience to bring them back and put them in charge of our newer officers on the road. It's no secret that since 2016, I would say, it's well over 50 to 60% of our department, maybe even more, turned over. We just had a mass amount of retirements. If you look back, we had a big hiring in the beginning, early 2000s, late 1990s, early 2000s, and then if you map out when they would retire, they retired all about the same time. Now, normally, what would happen, when we were, we did that when we were at like 50 officers, just below 50, but then we stopped hiring because of the Great Recession. So, all those officers pretty much have, you know, retired all at about the same time, which created a huge gap in experience from what we had one day to the next, based on all the retirements. So, what you'll see is a lot of officers coming through the ranks with a lot less time on, getting promoted to positions to be in charge, and it's good when we can send them out to these task forces and they can gain experience that just time on the job here wouldn't give them, it's beyond. So, I'm excited to see him, he's a great example of that. Sergeant Drinkard, who was promoted earlier, or a little bit later last year, I believe, another great example of that, being able to bring that experience back to us, get some extra years by being in somewhere different, so excited to see that. Congratulations to him. And just, our DPS had a lot of water main breaks to deal with over the weekend, and not enough credit goes to those guys. It's freezing cold, they're in a trench dealing with water, a job nobody, you know, envies at that time. They're out doing a fantastic job, and just how important of what they do for us is amazing, and they're very much appreciated. And it was, it's a regional problem right now. We have a water main system that is subject now to a frost, freeze, thaw, freeze, thaw over a short period of time, which has a lot of stress on our system. So, all of our neighbors are experiencing it too, and, but we've just got a great DPW crew to head out and take care of that, and I couldn't be more thankful. And lastly, just on the note of the Civic Plus, thank you for approving that. It's a goal of mine. One lesson I learned as police chief when we brought ordinance over was you can solve a lot of problems by just being able to talk to the resident with their issue. We got a part-time ordinance clerk start answering phones, and it addressed so many issues, and our residents felt heard. And I want our residents to as easily as possible be able to contact their government and feel heard and get a quick response. You know, if I order something right now, I can probably have it delivered by Amazon at 7:00 AM. And if I, if I'm unfortunate enough to go see my car was bumped into in the lot, I could probably file a claim on my State Farm app within an hour, and not even. So, the least we can do at Garden City is spend a couple extra dollars, get these apps on their phones that everybody has for all these other services, and let people access their government so much quicker and feel like they're heard. Pay a lot of money in taxes, I want to make sure you feel that value, and this is one great way. So, thank you for approving that, and I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yep, just congratulations to our new sergeant. Congratulations to the CTE students at the school on their accomplishments as a former DECA member 20-plus years ago. Like, it kind of takes me back, I'm like, "I remember doing that in high school," but it sounds like they're doing a lot of great stuff over there. And also, thank you very much to the volunteers from the community organizations for the chili cook-off.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Dole.
I'd also like to congratulate Sergeant Perrin for his time. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hughes.
I'd like to chime in on that, and you know, it's really, it's a great accomplishment. And I appreciate what you share about, you know, how our police force has grown and what has taken place to put these people in this position, to be able to stay here and have these opportunities. And I think we're very fortunate to have first responders and police officers that we do have here in Garden City. I'm truly grateful to each and every one of you guys.
Thank you. Councilmember Whit?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations as well to Sergeant Perrin, you know, also, great hearing everything,
You know, also, great hearing everything, especially with last council meeting, seeing the video, being able to be a part of what was experienced in some form is always great learning. As well, I'd like to thank Ms. Bomarito and the students from Garden City High School coming out. I spent four years of my high school in the graphic communications class, as well as Zach King downstairs. We both spent four years in that class, learning and with the great teachers. I had Ms. Bomarito for an accounting class. I didn't have Mr. Romez, but I, all of the students that I knew that had his class enjoyed construction trades as well. So it is a great thing that we offer that at the schools. I'm glad they're hopefully moving forward with an early teaching program for the students who are interested in going into that as well. So please, you know, if your students are getting into high school, talk to them a little bit about the differences of not exactly going to college or going to college, what options are there, so that they're prepared for high school and can get some different learning happening. And then all of the nonprofits that were here tonight, as well as the ones that weren't here, me as a council member, as well as a volunteer who has spent a lot of years volunteering around our city, you know, thank you guys for everything you do as well. And to people who don't have a chance to or are looking to, please reach out to each of the different organizations, see where you have time that you can help. All help is appreciated, and volunteers are in dire need everywhere. So please, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember King.
Thanks, Mayor. I would like, I go, whatever everybody else has said, congratulations to Officer Perrin on his promotion to sergeant. Also, the recognition for the DECA students. I also like to add that I also look forward to Civic Plus. You know, there's a lot of things we approve up here that indirectly benefits the residents, you know, maintenance on buildings and such. I see Civic Plus as a direct benefit to the residents. So I'm excited to see that.
Thank you. Councilmember Dole.
Well, I'm just going to follow along with everyone else and congratulate Sergeant Perrin. And also, thank you to Ms. Bomarito and the kids for coming in and giving that presentation. It's always good to see them. Sergeant Lewis, the Citizens Academy, I just want to mention that Mayor Protem Dole and I both attended that several years ago. And not only was it extremely interesting and informative, but it was fun. You guys made it fun. So, you know, you learn more when you're having fun. So I encourage anybody who's even slightly interested to sign up for this and attend it. Last but not least, talking about the volunteer organizations in Garden City, the Garden City Kiwanis is having an event Wednesday night, this Wednesday night at Oddfellow's Hall, 7 to 9. Just come and meet us, see what Kiwanis is about. We're going to have speakers there from the Ronald McDonald House, from Matt's Hospital out in Ann Arbor, a lot of the different organizations, the library, we work with the library, but all the different things that Kiwanis does in the community, a lot of them will be there represented, so just come and talk to us. No, that's all I've got, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Carefotos.
I just have some information I wanted to share. Council gets monthly reports from all the different departments, and I found them very interesting this month because it had some year-end totals. The Fire Department had almost 4,000 calls in '24, so you can tell they're working their butts off. The Building Department said that we had seven new businesses open in December alone, so that's great news. Our DPS said they had a service line inventory with 10,943 non-led service lines, and 320 were led, and that's just in the person's house, not the city part. And our lead service replacement contractor started replacing all those in January. So that's already happening. I thought that was great news. And then for the Police Department, which this just amazed me, our code enforcement did almost 3,000 code enforcements over in 2024. That's 235 a month. That's a lot of ordinance work. So if you think they're not out there, they are. Our Police Department did over 19,000 calls for service in '24, and 365 of those were animal-related. And that's when the police actually had to go out and do something with the animals. That doesn't include the over 300 animals that we saw at Lucky Dog Is Strays. So I'm happy that we have a current ordinance officer that's being trained as an animal control officer that's coming soon, and it's going to take some time away from the police who spend a lot of time. Just in December, they had over 27 animal complaints, so I'm glad that's going to happen. I was glad to see that on our plan that you turned in for the five-year capital improvements that included the Police Department getting some updates, so that's awesome. And I just wanted to do a shout-out to Sergeant Craig Lewis. He is our new resource officer, and he's someone that really cares about our community, especially the kids and our residents. So if you haven't talked to him yet, if you have a problem, he's the person to call. The Citizens Academy is really a great thing. I did it, and it was so much fun, and it wasn't never two hours. We are there sometimes till 11 o'clock.
I was just going to say, what, two hours?
Yeah, it was never two, it was never two o'clock. Sergeant Shippey talked all night long, and it was so fun. So if anybody's interested in that, it is a great class to do. It's just fun to learn about what our Police Department actually does. Our city manager was talking about the water main breaks, and it's just not us. I heard on 9:50 today that the city of Dearborn set a record with how many water main breaks they had this weekend. So it's happening all over, and we do have a great DPS. So if you see him out there, take him some coffee or some hot chocolate, they deserve it. And that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of things. First, I want to send condolences to the family of Kathy Ward. She was a member of some of our boards and commissions, and she unfortunately passed away. So condolences to her family. I want to congratulate Sergeant Perrin again also. I also want to piggyback off of Mr. Gibbons and Councilmember Carefotos on our DPW. I got a call starting Saturday morning about 8:00, about a water main break on Ford Road, and I believe by the end of the weekend, they were dealing with 12 of them over the weekend, of which they said they had four more to finish up today, and then they got another one today. So we're looking at 13 in a couple of days. That's a lot of work and a lot of manpower hours, and I know we haven't, we're not at a full crew right now. Obviously, holiday time and just not a full staff yet, but those guys work tremendous, and I appreciate it, all they've done. A couple of events coming up this Saturday. Haven of Love is having a fundraiser at Sports Venue. It's from 1:00 to 8:00. And again, if you know Lori and Matt that were here tonight from the Sports Venue, they do a lot for, a lot of volunteer work for animals and pets. So Haven of Love is Saturday from 1:00 to 8:00. Sunday, February 2nd, Joe Dees is doing the 20th Annual Skip Cowan Broomstick Pool Tournament. And if you're kind of curious, that is exactly what it is. It's a broom that they use the handle, put some chalk on it, and play pool, and do a tournament. And all proceeds go to the Garden City Food Pantry, and they've been doing that for 20 years for us. And all the information's on our website and also at Joe Dees, but it starts registrations